That's being pulled.
To be read at eleven?
Yeah, it won't be done.
Oh, okay, I see. I know, I know, I know.
No, not on repeat.
I'm sorry about that. And then the next two is for your animal services.
Got you.
So I'm assuming we'll be done.
So we're gonna do those right after we lift up.
You'll do, I think, public comment first.
Yeah.
And then resolution.
Okay.
So at the end of the animal services, we'll do that.
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's the right time to do it.
Okay, thank you very much.
What time we got here?
It's ten oh one.
Everybody here is, uh...
Don't worry about that. I would just go, who knows?
Last which?
Commissioner Fitzpatrick here.
Thank you, I'll text. Think I have a...
We got four, we got four.
All right. Let me look at something here first.
That is cold.
Good morning, everyone, I would like to call to order the hybrid virtual Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty-one. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please stand with me for the invocation and the pledge.
O merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given the opportunity to... Oh, excuse me, roll call.
District two, Commissioner Moore. District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given the opportunity to comment on any item coming before the board during this session. The board also takes public comment on items to come before the board, agenda, other business, under their purview. Due to COVID- nineteen operations and safeguard and to safeguard the well-being and safety of our citizens and staff, today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. This includes the public comment kiosks. Next, we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered on a WebEx link and are currently on cue. Finally, we will read into the record public comments, documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by the members of the public to be read out loud, played in the meet, in the meeting, or received and filed. This new format does not waive the request for when you address the board. Comments are not directed personally against any commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. For WebEx in-person kiosks participants, after saying your name and address for the clerk, the timer will be activated, will start a countdown. After two minutes, one beep will sound telling you you have one minute remaining. After the time is up, two beeps will sound and you're indicated three minutes are up and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected when their time is up and kiosks participants will be asked to leave the kiosk. The calling people are assigned to speak in person.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have one individual who's signed up. I don't know if there's other individuals who missed the sign-up, but the first person, the only person I have on the sign-up sheet is Mr. William, is it Zeitim? Ah, tried.
You can tell us better.
Hi, my name is William Stem and I live at ninety-eight-eleven San Diego Way in Port Ritchie. And I'm here representing the Westport Boat Club. And we are, have a petition signed that we're turning in today and pictures of different things and how low the water is in our area for dredging. We have approximately seventy-five percent of the people from just in this weekend signed of all the homes that live back by us. The rest of them were out of town or don't live here all year round. We only had one person that actually said no, that they wouldn't sign. And it was for the reason of he thought it would bring too much boat traffic into our area. We're in the back of a dead end, so it was kinda funny. But that's what I wanted to turn in this morning. And we had a meeting about a month ago and Mr. Mariano showed up for our meeting, which is very nice. He gave us a couple hours of his time and he went out in one of the boats with one of the gentlemen that lived there and showed him around the area and how, on a low tide, how it is to maneuver, if you can get out or you can't get out, depending on the size of your boat. I guess in the way back in, you guys got stuck. So that was kind of a little hint of how our area is. I actually live in a, like a drainage area that comes down on my canal. And that's what some of the pictures are. I'm literally fifty percent of my property at times has no water in it. So I'm a business owner and I'd love to go out and buy a nice boat, but I can't because I can't use it. So we're trying to petition about getting our area dredged in all the different spots that need to be done, including some of our markers, which we've been doing some work on ourselves and taking it upon ourselves to fix it. So I just want to turn all this stuff into you guys and...
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And how's Mr. Wilder doing?
I'm sorry.
How's Mr. Wilder doing?
Uh, I don't know, he wasn't doing too well. He just went in for that hernia operation and had a heart attack on the table. So that was all we knew. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, I'd like to... Commissioner Fitzpatrick's present at the dais now, so...
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, does anyone else sign up by WebEx or...
No one's signed, I have no one signed up in the audience. I don't know if there's, if there's anyone else that missed the sign-up.
You wish to speak today?
Uh, I checked it, the thing, they said I was on the list. Just want you to speak.
Come forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Name and address for the clerk.
Uh, my name's Gary Hart. My address is seventy-two-ten Rockwood Drive. I live in the Jasmine Estates area, Port Ritchie. On May fifth, I was cited for having a trailer in my front yard, ordinance five thirty-three point one-one. Not a particularly big thing. It's kind of a regular cycle that happens in our neighborhood. Went across the street, talked to my neighbor. He had a boat and trailer too. He got cited. And we got to talking amongst ourselves and we're trying to think, when was the last time anybody asked us if it was all right to have a boat and trailer? Or if we thought it was okay? So talking to some neighbors, they all felt pretty much the same way. We called up, so we decided to do something about it. We talked to the county commissioner office. The ladies were great, told us to get a petition up. And so that's what we did, we got a petition up. I gotta say, ninety-one percent of the people I talked to want to keep their boat in their yard. And so they really want this. There was a lot of support from the people. I arbitrarily drew lines because we're not an organization, we're just neighbors. And we didn't know how to set the boundaries or what the limits were on that. They just know, we know, we want our boats there. We pay thousands of dollars every month to stay there. And it was equal. Also, the owners and the renters both wanted it. And so here we are. I'd like to put this petition on the agenda. The people are very excited about it. And if there's anything else we can do. They want you to be our heroes.
Motion for a second.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Please hand that to the clerk.
Should I turn?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Is anyone else in the audience wish to speak at this time? I guess the kiosks is open, but we're not...
So the WebEx, we had two people pre-register. Mr. Hart was one of them, so since he's in person.
Okay.
I've checked him off. The other individual is not on WebEx as of yet.
Okay, so that's everyone who have the speaking...
That is everyone on the WebEx. Do you want to check the kiosks?
Is anyone at the kiosks to speak this morning? I would think it would be in here today.
They shouldn't be at this point.
Yeah. No one there?
Friend that's have a call.
Okay. All right.
Then we are...
General's round, so that's end of public comment.
I have one email to read.
Oh, okay.
Public comment.
That's the last, last time we're doing that, right?
Yep.
Today's the last day.
Well, after we go through, after we go through consent.
If you amend your rules.
Right. If we change that, so...
All right, so, Mr. Chair, if I can...
Go ahead.
Okay. The email is from Rob Park. Address is nine-six-one-four Aaron Cut Off Road, Land O' Lakes, Florida. Agenda item number ten, commissioners. The public health emergency brought about many changes. One change was the ability for citizens to be able, to be able to voice comments and concerns using modern technology. This change allowed access for many citizens who normally, health emergency or not, would not be able to have their comments and concerns heard. Please keep the option for citizens' comments and concerns to be read aloud in future meetings. Many citizens cannot appear in person and may not be comfortable speaking in front of an audience. Reading the comments and concerns aloud gives citizens an insight into the, into other citizens' views, which can help open dialogues for resolutions. Sending the comments and concerns to commissioners via email is not open. Citizens appearing in person or via the WebEx should be given an opportunity for additional comments if an applicant has a rebuttal. Thank you, Rob Park.
Okay, and that's all we have?
That's all we have.
All right. Is anyone else here to speak that have not taken the opportunity to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move on to, it's time for the resolutions. RS, RS one has been withdrawn from the list, so we'll start with... No.
No, your resolutions are first.
Resolutions are first.
We do have...
Didn't know we were doing live, thanks. We back at that, okay.
Yeah. Few changes. Okay, all right.
All right, so then RS two?
Yes, RS two.
So Stella, is it Ices? Ices? Ickies, okay, thank you. If you could please stand up at the podium, thank you. And anyone else who wants to be here to support her? Resolution number twenty-one dash two-one-two, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Stella Ickies? Is that right? Correct. For receiving the twenty-twenty-one Florida Animal Control Association Animal Control Officer of the Year Award. Whereas each year, the Florida Animal Control Association, representing seventy-two agencies and over one thousand four hundred animal control officers and animal welfare professionals statewide, recognizes outstanding individuals in the field of animal control and services that have distinguished themselves as leaders in their profession and shown outstanding achievement within their organization and communities. And whereas the Florida Animal Control Association has selected Pasco County Animal Services Officer, Stella Ickies, as their twenty-twenty-one award recipient as Animal Control Officer of the Year for outstanding achievement and strong commitment to service excellence to the citizens and pets of Pasco County. And whereas Officer Ickies consistently goes above and beyond in, to assist Pasco residents with pet retention and resource needs. She collaborates with shelter, veterinarian, and pet service teams to provide needed assistance such as sterilizations, vaccinations, food, fencing materials, and other pet resources to help numerous homeless, elderly, and resource-challenged pet owners retain their pets. She personally initiated the Field Outreach Program, helping hundreds of citizens with similar pet resources and retention needs. And whereas Officer Ickies exercised strong leadership in the Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, and Return, TNVR program, by soliciting and coordinating community involvement, providing training, resources, and personally transporting over five hundred community and feral cats to the shelter for sterilization and vaccination. Her efforts achieved a three hundred and eighty percent TNVR increase in twenty-twenty, resulting in reduced cat complaints in many neighborhoods. And whereas Officer Ickies is a remarkable representative of a progressive community resource and life-saving animal services officer. She has helped transform the reputation and image of animal services by demonstrating great care and compassion for people with and pets in Pasco County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in session duly assembled, that said board hereby commends Animal Control Officer Stella Ickies for her dedication, service excellence, and for her selection as the Florida Animal Control Association twenty-twenty-one Animal Control Officer of the Year. Done and resolved with a quorum present and voting the twenty-second day of June twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Now it's time for your speech.
I just want to thank my coworkers in the community because without all of them, none of this would be possible. So thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, we certainly appreciate it. Great day in Pasco again, so... Ms. Fitzpatrick, you wanna, you wanna get pictures or what are we gonna do?
And can I also, can I also just say thank you for your hard work and dedication. It's an honor to have you here in Pasco County and you're an asset to our county, thank you.
Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services, I want to share a quick story about Stella. Had the pleasure of taking her to lunch the other day and we were in a local restaurant and people... Stella seems to have a loud voice and so she was bragging about all the great things that the county is doing. And unbeknownst us, the waitress came up and said, "Somebody has paid for your lunch for all the great things you do for the county." And with that said, the waitress also had a dog that has been getting loose. We received a fifty thousand dollar grant. With that grant, we're able to build fences, help people keep their pets at home. And she's becoming our first client with the waitress there. So it was really a remarkable day, right Stella? That all this came to fruition and this person's been able to keep their dog at home. We're gonna be putting the fence in and all good things happen to animal services. So thank you to the team.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to add on. So still, congratulations to you. And I know Jess is, Jessica is coming up in a minute for something else. But just want to highlight something else. The team's been doing an amazing job when it comes to going out and searching for grants. I think recently, fifty thousand dollar grant from one source, another twenty-five thousand dollar grant from another source. So we appreciate all your efforts, the entire team. Keep up the great work and... I tell you what, it's kind of been night and day since I first came on here in two thousand fourteen, how far we've come.
Yeah.
As an agency.
I get few calls or anything.
My, I mean, listen, when I first came on, every single day, multiple emails, calls to the office. I can't tell you the last time I received one. The only ones I receive now are positive. So thank you all.
Oh, yeah. Great job, that tells the whole story right there, so...
If I could just say something real quick. I like that Mike Schumate, Director of Animal Services, just want to say real quick. This past year, we, during the pandemic, we were involved with a national organization called HOS, Human Animal Support Services. And it really transitions shelters from what they're currently doing by taking in animals and stuff to really supporting community needs and stuff. So we refocused a lot of things. But I just want to say about Stella, she was doing HOS before HOS was HOS. I mean, she...
The inventor of HOS.
She was out in our community. She's been in Moonleg, she's been in every holiday everywhere. And we just, we got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Florida Animal Friends, which is a license plate grant, folks. And we were able to go into Holiday and we did eight hundred cats with that money. So she transported a lot of them. She scheduled a lot of them. But not only that, while she's out there talking to those people, she's finding out what their needs are. She's hooking them up with, you know, human services and community development and things like that. So she's doing an amazing job and we really appreciate her.
That is amazing.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mariano?
I'll get into the picture, I'll just...
Commissioner, you want to speak?
Yeah, and Stella, I know you stepped away, but I want to, I want to say, you're doing a phenomenal job. You know, it's great when you have people like Mike and Kathy to help elevate you guys because I just see so many great things over and over again. Like even just on Saturday, listening to Spencer talking about all the CHIP program, reaching out to the community, getting people out there, all to make everybody's job and life easier to get their pets back. So thanks for all the great work you're doing. You're just part of a tremendous team, but thanks for being such a shining example too.
Yes, Mr. Chair, RS three is Jessica Everie. If you would please come up and stand at the podium. Resolution number twenty-one dash two-thirteen, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Jessica Everie for receiving the twenty-twenty-one Florida Animal Control Association Supervisor of the Year Award. Whereas each year, the Florida Animal Control Association, representing seventy-two agencies and over one thousand four hundred animal control officers and animal welfare professionals statewide, recognizes outstanding individuals in the field of animal control and services that have distinguished themselves as leaders in their profession and shown outstanding achievement in their organizations and communities. And whereas the Florida Animal Care Control Association has selected animal, Pasco County Animal Services Shelter Supervisor Jessica Everie as their twenty-twenty-one award recipient as Supervisor of the Year for her outstanding achievement and strong commitment to service excellence in, to the citizens and pets of Pasco County. And whereas Jessica has excelled as the Shelter Services Supervisor at Pasco County Animal Services. She exemplifies innovative leadership as a department administrator for the Shelter Data Management Software System, where she trains new team members, resolves data issues, creates operational reports, and collaborates with multiple departments to improve data and financial integrity. And whereas Jessica is an outstanding leader who is highly engaged with her team. When they asked for more animal behavior training, she acquired certification classes with the Karen Pryor Behavioral Training Institute and increased animal behavioral assessment play groups with dogs playing for life. She established a project pet program for team members to work with special needs pets. This resulted in a thirty-two percent increase in those pets achieving positive outcomes such as adoption or rescue transfer. And whereas Jessica successfully drafted the twenty-twenty Florida Animal Friends Grants for twenty-five thousand dollars to assist the holiday area with sterilizing, the sterilization of eight hundred feral and community cats. Jessica was also a contributing member of the Service Enterprise Guiding Coalition, responsible for animal services, becoming the first Pasco County organization to achieve the Points of Light Service Enterprise certification. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in session duly assembled, that said board hereby commends Shelter Supervisor Jessica Everie for her achievements in selection and selection as the Florida Animal Control Association twenty-twenty-one Animal Supervisor of the Year. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this twenty-second day of June twenty-twenty-one.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. It really is a team effort.
If I can just say, this is Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator. You know, as Dan Biles has taught us four years ago, empower your people. This young lady, Jessica, has grown in so much as a leader in the years that I've watched her and I couldn't be more proud of how a leader and supervisor she has become. So Jessica, alls I can say, I'm so proud of you. Thank you.
I would like...
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, sorry.
It's all right.
No, I just want to say, Jessie's the one that, that makes everything at the shelter really work behind the scenes. And she does a lot of that with her team. She's, she's given her team a lot of opportunities to be hands-on with the animals, to really help them in the transition when an animal comes into the shelter. You can imagine sometimes the behaviors and the illnesses and things like that that they come in with. And she makes sure everybody, each one of those animals gets everything they need. She's also a big part of why, last year, we had a save rate of ninety-four percent for all animals, which was amazing for us. So it's the first time we ever hit that record. So definitely appreciate her. She's also LDP graduate and she's just got her green belt. So she's really growing as a supervisor. We really appreciate her.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. I would like to say your caring and compassionate leadership is recognized and valued not only by the public and your staff. Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And just for what you're doing, I mean, when you go into animal services, the team around you is like phenomenal. The volunteers are all pumped up, so your leadership has got to be doing tremendous things, and it is. So thank you very much for your service.
We have one more resolution walk-on by the clerk. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'd like to submit this walk-on resolution for one of my deputy clerks, an Assistant Director in Civil Court Services, Ms. Noreen Mack, and if it could be read as title only for her many years of service to our county and to my office.
Good to hear that. Walk on.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. It's resolution number 21-215. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, expressing appreciation to Noreen M. Mack, Deputy Clerk, for the Office of the Clerk and Controller for her 26 years of outstanding service to Pasco County. Thank you.
Second.
And a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now was time we move on to next line of business is consent agenda. I have a pull sheet with no items on it.
Oh.
Which is pretty amazing in itself. That means everybody got every i in the right place and the t's crossed and all the numbers right. So that's pretty good. But so without having that, I...
Move for approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for approval of the consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Mr. Chair, could I have that document? I don't have one here for the background.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We'll go from there to...
Mary tell us, Sean, you already can get her, Ralph.
He's coming from Brooksville.
Now we move to the regular agenda. So I believe it's... R42?
Good morning. I'm Laura Wilcoxon. I'm the interim director for Pasco County Emergency Management, presenting to you today solutions for the Lakeside Woodlands sinkhole situation for your discussion. At the May 4th BCC meeting, the board requested a presentation on options for the homeowners affected by the sinkholes in their Lakeside Woodlands area. I'm going to go over a brief history of the timeline, the magnitude of the situation, mitigation attempts thus far, and options for the board to consider and discuss with the objective of gaining your direction for the next steps. This is a timeline of the geotechnical investigations that have led us to where we are today. Emergency management was notified of the depressions in the HOA-owned retention pond shortly following Hurricane Dorian in August 2019. As this is private property, the HOA hired Pinnacle Engineering to conduct a GPR or ground penetrating radar study of the retention pond area. The Pinnacle report led to the county hiring Intertec PSI to conduct a GPR study of the roadway, which showed a concern of anomalies between 7803 and 7809 Willowbrook Court, resulting in us installing barricades on the roadway. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection also surveyed the area, noting a cave system that comes across the retention pond area and crossing Willowbrook Court. All three of the engineering reports advised to use extreme caution due to the stability of the land surface. Emergency management, following the report, started hosting meetings with the homeowners association and the residents to try and find a way to purchase homes in the surrounding area utilizing grant funding. This is a map from the first geotechnical survey from Pinnacle. The survey focused solely on the retention area, showing numerous anomalies. As part of the report, Pinnacle Engineering offered their opinion that remediation efforts may not be cost-effective and could have a critical effect on the neighboring residential structures. This report provided a suggestion for soil improvement under the roadway, despite showing several anomalies that have been previously filled by the county in the road adjacent to the retention pond. The county therefore hired Intertec PSI to survey the roadway. The Intertec report shows 14 anomalies between 7803 and 7809 Willowbrook Court. Intertec PSI's opinion on fixing the roadway was that any remediation attempts to stabilize the roadway will be futile as soil loss will continue as a result of the underground cave system. At the end of October, about one month after the holes in the retention pond opened, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection reviewed the two previous engineering reports and provided their own assessment. They overlaid what was known about the cave system in relation to the area that had been surveyed. This map shows the cave system coming directly across through the retention pond area, highlighted in the blue circle, and going through, crossing over Willowbrook Court. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection also advises to use a caution if attempting remediation activities as there could be adverse effects on the stability of the land surface. They also further advise that future sinkhole occurrence in the area could be likely. Emergency management has been trying to find grant funding to purchase homes in the areas for over a year and a half now. We have worked with all of our state and federal partners, but every avenue that we have attempted has been denied so far as the properties do not meet the defined requirements for the grants that are available. So with grant funding unavailable, I'm presenting to you today several options for your discussion on how we can proceed with response from the county. First option I present to you is, due to the impact from the county placing barricades on Willowbrook Court, that the county would purchase the six impacted homes, demolish them, and return the land to additional water retention area. The estimated cost for the purchase of the properties and demolition is $1.4 million. The second option I present is to continue to investigate and attempt to reinforce the roadway by filling in anomalies. However, there is no reasonable expectation that this can be done as we have three engineering reports stating that this could result in continued soil loss, and engineering options suggest remediation activities will be significantly more expensive than the estimate for option one. We did find a similar case study up in Kentucky in 2014 where there was another cave system that a sinkhole opened over in a Corvette museum. It was a smaller area than what we were experiencing up in Willowbrook Court, and the estimated cost for repairs were $3.2 million. Option three is that we can maintain the status quo. Rather than the current movable barriers that we have, we would install permanent barriers that could be moved for maintenance in the area that also provide pedestrian access. The last slide, it highlights the six homes that we are discussing and how we reached the $1.4 million estimate. That's my presentation.
That's it?
Yes.
You don't have the answer for?
I don't. That's why, for your discussion.
Chairman Oakley.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
I was trying to come up with different options as well. And one other option was possibly doing an MSU to the HOA for the $1.4 million. And if it goes over 2,200 homes, it would be 636 a year. And over 10 years, it would be $5.30 a month if it's going to continue continuously happen. So there wasn't a set precedent where we have to continue paying for every road.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, in Land O' Lakes a couple of years ago, when we had a big sinkhole collapse, through no fault of the people there, on their own, the county stepped in and did the right thing and made the people whole. They had homes collapsing in them. This, we don't have the scenario. If you look at the stretch of road from 7803 to 7809, those homes in there, that section of road, they say can't be fixed. And I'm going to go along with that, that it can't be fixed. Unless something comes back with that information, that would lead us to, you have these people that are seniors, children that can't live a quality of life, getting to the back to their no fault of their own. And I don't have to blame the county on this because the technology that was probably in place at the time couldn't foresee this. Our current code technology would never allow these homes to be built where they're built. And over time, it's now just happened where it's eroded away. And it's happened over on Tequa Drive. You may remember a home that was condemned before, got uncondemned, but it's the same riverine system. I think what we should be doing is to buy these homes out, tear them down safely. And at the next point, I think we need to take a look at, and Lauren, we've talked about this, so maybe you'll talk about this, but from the road of, from 7809 out to Lake Shore Boulevard and also down toward the other end of it at 7711, there's anomalies in the roadway that can be fixed, from what I can see, that should get fixed because they're out of the canalway, but there's still some settling in there. And you could make that whole neighborhood whole, where you just have a T intersection that'll be there. I know it's not the most desirable thing, but compared to what else we could do, I think we should be fixing the road on both ends and doing the full buyout. Lauren, do you have any numbers as to what it would take to do the both sides of the roadway yet?
No, working with road and bridge, they advised further investigation, geotechnical investigation would be required to come up with any estimate or direction.
Okay.
So there were three reports that we have solely focus on this area.
Okay. So again, these people had no fault of their own. I'm not, didn't say we're to blame either, but it just is an unfortunate situation that we've set precedence where someone struggled in Land O' Lakes. We solve the situation, there's a solution there, too.
And I...
The difference between...
Mr. Chairman, I just need to do a correction real quick.
What now?
I just need to correct something. The Land O' Lakes situation was actually different.
It is.
The county didn't go in and buy the homes. Actually, thankfully for them, or not thankfully, the insurance actually paid for the homes. So the county did not, Dan or Mike, you can step in. What happened is that the majority of those homes were able to receive their claims because of how close they were and how they were affected by the sinkhole. So a little bit different. Listen, I'm all, I just wanted to make sure there was no confusion to the public to think that we actually went out and purchased those homes because we did not.
Yeah.
There was one that we were in negotiation with at the time, but that didn't go, ended up going through. Mike, if you want to jump in, and I think I hit the nail on the head, but...
Total different situation in Land O' Lakes than here.
Right, the insurance companies there because they were complete collapses covered. They bought those homes out at Land O' Lakes because they were either condemned because of the damage to the homes or they completely collapsed.
The difference is, the difference is, those homes had damage to them. These homes don't have any damage to them. It's the roadway in front of them.
We executed some repairs to the road to create a turnaround.
Could we possibly build a short bridge across there with pylons and...
I don't think that would be cost-effective.
It would be significantly in excess of what you'd pay to buy the homes out.
But I know Commissioner Starkey and the community have been very involved in this, so I'm kind of going to sit back.
Yeah, so I've done many trips to Tallahassee and I talked in Washington to FEMA, very high-level executives, Senate staffers that work with this kind of stuff. And this is a really unusual situation. And frankly, I think in Washington, they need to make this eligible, this kind of happening eligible. But right now, there really isn't anything that will let this be eligible for any kind of disaster funding. Sorry for my cough. In my opinion, what sets this thing apart from a typical sinkhole event is that it's the road. It's the county road that is what's condemned. And so, because I don't want to open up Pandora's box if someone has a sinkhole in their yard or under their house and we step in and help them out. This is a different situation. We have tried for years to find another way to fund this, and frankly, it's all dead end. So I am personally in support of this. I don't know what you were talking about with the other road, but I think what we're focusing on today is just buying out these houses. Correct. And closing off this road. I am curious what can happen to this property. Will it be a park? Will it be cordoned off? I mean, we need to know what the safest thing to do for our residents is. You know, I don't want anyone else driving on that road, and I want it to look attractive for the other people. So I am curious what that's going to look like, but I am supportive of buying out the houses.
That thought, if we did, we couldn't leave the road open at all, I don't believe so. Not at all. So it'd have to be closed off on both ends.
It's closed today.
Where would the money come from?
Yeah, but I don't want a barricade there, you know? Needs to be something more.
Barricade at both ends.
Yeah, something attractive for the hood.
Where would the money come from for this kind of operation here?
It would come out of your general fund.
General fund.
Yeah, your capital account and the general fund. It's a one-time expense.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So and Commissioner Moore, I wasn't trying to say they were identical, so we did...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, that's okay, and I'm glad you did because we need to get it clear for the record, so I appreciate it. Out there, and maybe, Dan, you may know the number, maybe Mike, you know the number, we did spend a bunch of money creating...
We did.
So we did spend money on it, just not on the homes themselves, so...
I'm supportive of you, what you guys want to do.
Yeah, no, no. No, no, and again, I'm glad you clarified, I am.
Mr. Chairman.
Glad you clarified it. And Commissioner Starkey, your involvement of trying to look at every single angle, and she looked at every single angle, up and on the coast, every government entity, whether it be Tallahassee or DC, you gave it everything you could for the people, too. So I greatly appreciate your going through the whole thing, and I appreciate the board coming up to take a look at this because it's no fault of their own. I think it's the right thing to do, so...
And I just want to say, that was, part of that was my ability to access those folks in Washington was, one, our lobbyists, and two, as Chair of the Federal Committee at FAC, it opened doors for me. And I was able to go in and, you know, speak to those offices, so...
Do you want to make your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Fitzpatrick.
Can we get a geotechnical study of Lake Shore Boulevard and Rusty Hook? Because those trails are right around the corner.
Do you want to?
A geotechnical report for Rusty Hook. Because if the trail is burning...
I think the commissioner is concerned that the cave system impacts those roads as well.
Correct. Because they had the study of how it affected...
So what you're saying is possibly not the end of this...
No, I think this is a precedent case for future.
Well, I'm going to make the motion.
Yeah, second.
Okay, motion's made in second.
What's the motion?
To approve number one.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Nay.
One nay, so motion passed four to one. Option number one.
Thank you for your direction.
Laura, thank you for doing such a great job, the whole team. I mean, you guys were phenomenal, looking at every which way to go with this, so thank you very much for everything.
Team's been doing this for the past two years, and we want to help the residents as much as you guys do.
You're awesome, thank you.
I hope we can close on those houses quickly so that they're not living there during this rainy season and be fearful of sleeping and having to lug all their stuff in during the rain.
Yeah.
Well, the real issue we have there is a place for them to go.
Yeah, that's going to be a challenge.
Because that's a big challenge right now to have a place for them to go, so...
Commissioner...
Ms. Chairman.
And listen, I want to commend obviously both Commissioner Mariano and Starkey on this. I know Commissioner Mariano's worked, you know, very, very hard with the team and the staff and obviously Commissioner Starkey, you know, traveling all the way up to DC and working hard. I mean, you guys did everything you could to try to find other means besides having to use, obviously, general funds, but at the same time, you know, it's the right thing to do.
You know, on that line, I think we should write a letter with laying out the facts and send it up, you know, to FEMA. Just say, you know, it wasn't, we weren't able to help our folks, but with federal money, although I think we should have. Let's try and work to fix it so that this happens again. They're part of a FEMA, they can be part of FEMA or CDR or whatever it is.
There are earmarks now, again.
Well, this, no, this is something in there...
But there's still earmarks.
Yeah, but this is something I think they need to fix in there. I don't know what the word is, statutes or whatever they use in Washington. But this is a little anomaly, that glitch that was unthought of when they worked on those rules.
We can get a letter written and then send it up.
Yeah, and we'll work with our lobbyists.
Based on the county commission, so, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
It's my friend, we'll bring it up at FAC, Jack.
There you go.
FAC, Jack.
All right, move on to R43. Mr. Ralph Lehrer.
Should we wait?
I was just going to say, if you could wait about five minutes. Sean Foster is en route. He was at Brooksville this morning, doing a presentation to Hernando, and they had lots of questions. So he's en route, if you don't mind.
Okay, we'll wait.
Thank you.
We'll wait that five minutes. Well, I tell you what we can do. Mr. Moore, you ready for your old business?
Yeah, I'll be...
We'll start that, and we'll come back to it when he gets here.
Just a couple of quick things. I did find somebody to replace Ms. Motherhead on the commission, on the Status of Women. I appreciate Ms. Motherhead and all the efforts, but obviously, life gets in the way, work gets in the way sometime. But I think most of you know Ginny Yingling, awesome person, very, very involved in the community in a number of ways, big when it comes to rotaries as well. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Ginny Yingling to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero.
In tourism update, more exciting news from Florida Sports Coast. For the third year in a row, Florida Sports Coast has been recognized by the Telly Awards. If you remember, the Telly Awards are the premier award hosting award, I guess you could say, for video and television across all screens, and when I say all screens, I mean, you know, movie screens, Roku, cable, whatever it may be. They received over 12,000 entries this past year from all 50 states and five continents. Even Netflix, Nickelodeon, CBS, even Playstation are some of the names you may know that have won the Telly Awards. So Florida Sports Coast this year have won five Telly Awards, which is pretty incredible, yeah. Two videos were produced in 2020 that you may remember, the Sports Coast Strong and Game On. I think we showed both of those at our meeting and at the banquet as well. So they won a silver award for Sports Coast Strong, and that was in branded content and social impact. And they also won the Game On Silver Telly Award for branded content with a budget under $100,000. So congratulations to the Florida Sports Coast team for all their great work and obviously spreading the word about Pasco County. So thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Starkey.
I'm going to talk real slow for Sean.
Why, you going to speak when he gets here or what?
I wanted to investigate a little more about broadband in the county, and I know I've talked to the administrator about it, but apparently during COVID, the school district had to take buses and put them around the county with... So students had access to the internet. And so, I mean, there's federal money coming to expand broadband, and I just want to make sure that if there's money available and we have need, that we're accessing that. I know that many times Greg Armstrong has said that one of the inhibitors of growth on the 19th corridor was high-speed internet access. And so, I don't know, Eric, if that's your department or who's that, you know, do we have an overlay of where we have... You know, do we have an overlay of where we have high-speed internet access in the county? And can it be better? Maybe talk with our EDC folks. Were you going to say something?
Well, I mean, the SEC maintains a site that shows all the providers in all the areas throughout the country. And, you know, everybody in Pasco has access to more than one outside of a very small percentage that only has access really to one provider. But, I mean, so there are a lot of different options out there for people.
What type of, what type of access?
What's, I mean, broadband is defined by the SEC. So that includes satellite, I mean, even Elon Musk has a new satellite system that will give you the same speeds that you can get from Frontier and Spectrum today. So, I mean, there are a lot of different broadband avenues out there. Now, if somebody can't afford the monthly connections, there's federal programs and the programs that Spectrum and Frontier have to help with that. But that's an income-based, need-based program.
And is that something that we have to work with Spectrum and them on to access for citizens who don't have high-speed or internet access? Or is that something that they do on their own?
That's something they do on their own.
I've never really been involved in the broadband meetings. I don't know if you have, but I've been hearing a lot of them on the NACO national calls that I've been on. And then I was surprised to hear that we had some issues with many of our students, especially on the east side.
One of you sign the rural areas.
Yeah, that they could not do their, you know, participate in school.
They have a hard time with Wi-Fi and all.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The issue for the commission to get involved is that several years ago, the legislature took away your ability to regulate, to franchise Frontier and Spectrum. And so you don't have any clout over them anymore for, as I just discussed with Commissioner Moore, about installation of lines, tearing yards up. They respond to the PSC and that's pretty much it.
Well, I guess, I guess if.
As a regulatory.
I know, but if, and maybe I'll talk to, I know the lobbyist for Spectrum. But if there's a way that we can access funds to help put in lines where it's cost prohibitive for, especially in our rural areas, there are funds out there for it. And I think we should be looking at it. So I'm just kind of saying that. I wondered what's going on with our PVAS study and when will we be seeing that?
So actually, we have a meeting scheduled with the county administrator in the middle of this week to discuss our approach to what the board's direction was. But we're still several months away from presenting a final solution back to the board for consideration.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to that. I, so I was on a national panel last week, trying not to hack my way through it, with the League of Cities and the National Council of Mayors. And I was, and there was a commissioner, another commissioner from Texas, I think. And we were talking about workforce. So it was a panel on workforce. And guys, you know, I thought we were groundbreaking in our support of AM Skills and that million dollars that we gave to our workforce board. But oh my gosh, what these counties around the country are doing in investing in workforce development is unbelievable. And I may work on bringing a report to you guys about what's happening in other places because these counties look at workforce development training as a major investment in the cities, the citizens in their county and the strength of their economy. I mean, they've been funding community college programs and funding apprenticeships. And it's, and I'm talking about apprenticeships and other people's businesses. So it's very interesting. One of the, one of the counties had a program to, during COVID, and they had 800 county citizens participate in an upscaling, upskilling program that the county paid for. So I think we could still do better. And I'll be bringing that report to you. Let's see. Oh, I had a call yesterday from someone on my civic association board. We had a 50-foot boat sink out in Gulf Harbors and a rental slip. And supposedly rental slips are illegal. The owner is not even living in the country and can't be reached. So they have been looking through MUNICODE and looking everywhere for what the rules are on people renting slips out in their backyard. So county attorney, or I don't know who that would be, but if we could get some help seeing if we have an ordinance. I do believe one time we were, I was driving with staff in Gulf Harbors, and I know there's a home that rents out like four slips. And they said that, they didn't think that was legal, so. So if you could let us know, we'd appreciate that. And lastly, on the federal lobbyist, I know that, and I was going to text my friend Janet Long here, but I know that Pinellas County, with their lobbyists, they have a meeting with their, like we're going to have this morning, we're having a recap with our lobbyists. But they have a meeting before this season starts with their lobbyists. And that includes their federal lobbyists. They, I believe they have more than one. And I think that we need to get more engaged to be sure we're getting, you know, all our ROI with our federal lobbyists. So do you meet with the Pinellas County and the Hillsborough County administrators once in a while?
We have routine phone calls, monthly or every couple of months.
I think it would be really interesting to see how other counties use their lobbyists and make sure that we are taking advantage. I know that Pinellas County is getting all kinds of transportation grants for, from the FTA. I think there's one in the paper, there was one in the paper again this morning. They're going for a build grant. And I just, I really want to be more proactive on that side of our house, so. Okay, I think, oh, one last thing. Sean's not here yet. But I want to be sure we're scheduling that meeting between New Port Ritchie, Port Ritchie, and Pasco County. We used to, we've done a few, we haven't done it in a few years. I think it's time again. And I don't know, in the past, we also had one with, on the other side.
We haven't done it since COVID.
Yeah, so actually, the first one that we did, we did it with all the cities. We did it out in St. Leo, I think. And we had, had all the cities. But I don't mind splitting it in two.
It doesn't matter what, if there's issues going on.
We were, we were doing annual east side and west side meetings.
Yeah.
One in the fall, one in the spring. But COVID, you know, kind of stopped that. We canceled the west side one once COVID hit last spring. So, you know, we can, if the board wants, we can restart the annual meeting with them on the spring-fall cycle that we were on.
Yeah, well, I brought that up a couple of weeks ago.
Which would actually put the east side up next, so.
Definitely want to talk to them about trails, greenways, I think dredging. Want to talk about, I want to discuss some of the ordinances they've just enacted. So, thank you. That's it with me.
Commissioner Patrick?
CRAs.
I would like, we had a Moon Lake community meeting. I would like to thank Mike Carballa and Ainsley and our sheriff's office and code and all the other assistant county administrators and their teams for coming out that evening. I feel it was a great meeting, and the community was able to get a lot of answers that they didn't have. And now they're directed to who they need to speak with. Next, I would like to say, I went to the AM Skills graduation last Friday, and that was a great event. Do we have the pictures? Thank you. So they host a one-day workshop, a workshop, and then they offer a two-week workshop, boot camp, where they go and they create and do electrical skills. They learn different skills for different trades. The next one is in Hillsborough, but then the next one in Pasco County is in September. So I am looking forward to seeing how that goes. These were photos of the graduation.
This is that Lighthouse for the Blind, their new building.
Yeah. They were sad to see them leave.
They charged us.
Like to see them continue to work together. There was nine students in that program. And then on the Friday, they each got to interview with one of these larger, with one of the companies in Pasco County. So not only do they teach them the skill and the trade, they connect them with a career. And then they can go and be an apprenticeship for that company. Next, I know we've spoke about it in the past, is the front landscaping. So I wasn't sure if we had an update or if we would, if Commissioner Starkey, if you were looking to make a motion to direct staff to amend the code? So there was a tree in front of every yard or every landscape.
Well, I think the staff is working on that. I actually participated in the vertical and the horizontal discussions with staff last week. And then I was on the Tampa Bay Builders Association. And I'm going to, I'm going to make this fun comment. Sally, you were on there, right? Yeah, so I showed my video. And again, I don't know who made that, and I don't want to know of the, what I call the slum building. And, and there was, there was an engineer that showed some pictures of another project that wasn't probably premier. And turns out, the builders of that project were also on the call. And this one person said he was nervous that now they would never get any work from that company. However, that company, big company, called up this person and said they're, they want to meet with them to work on making their product better. And so they're all very positive about wanting to improve their product and making it better. So they have.
I've had the same type of meetings.
Yeah, so they're getting the message.
They're very receptive.
And they are very receptive. So I am still, until you guys get it fixed, everyone who comes in front of here with a PUD or MPUD is going to have to commit to a tree in the front. But I'm very encouraged that the industry is stepping forward. So thanks for bringing that up.
No queen palms.
And no queen palms. No rat palms, yes.
Queens wouldn't live very long when it freezes here, so.
Also, I would like to just bring up the little road, how it's blocked off. And I know we're still waiting on different things. So I would just like to have an update because I see cars speeding by or potential crashes just because everyone has to merge over. So it's not affecting just personal, private residences anymore. It's affecting our public roads. So I would like to know if there's a way to speed up the process or move the cones or an update on that project.
So at this point, we're engaging a geotechnical firm to take a look at that.
Thank you. And of course, lastly, just to follow up with smart growth. We need manage, to manage our growth. We need the commerce and the revenue that comes from the properly guided progress. We also need to make specific and deliberate decisions. And yes, like Commissioner Oakley had stated, we need communities and not just subdivisions. So we just really need to pay attention to every individual project that comes in front of the board and making sure it's the right project for the right area. Thank you.
Mr. Marano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say, today on the consent agenda, we had an item on there that was probably 12 years in the making, maybe, maybe even a little bit longer. The piece of property we bought up in Seapines is the last piece we're going to need to go, I think, do a major, major improvement on all the stormwater issues that have been up there for years and years. When we started dredging Lafitte years ago, we thought we had all the parcels. This is the one parcel we didn't have with that townhold development that was coming into the south. They've given us the right way we need. The other parcels we bought a couple of months ago, it's not going to be able to take a lot of that water, north, south, and east and west, and actually get it out to the Gulf and put them in a much better position. So I want to tell you, I'm so excited about that. And Mike, I want to thank your team again on Tower Drive. They're getting forward to go putting the markings out to go start doing that and hopefully in a short period of time, because it's a little project that'll get done for the season too. So those, those two issues are like my last big ones in my district as far as fixing stormwater stuff. So I'm excited, all the progress we've made with the stormwater utility, what we've done to bring this forward. So I thank everybody for that. And Jordan, do you have a picture of the Hudson Beach? This is just a thought. And if you take a look at, this is the Hudson Beach area. And when you see Sam's Beach Bar, there's an overlay picture that kind of goes over the black and white that's in there. I asked Debbie Mans to send me an overlay of the picture of the parking garage they built behind Cosi University. And just throwing it out there, but that parking garage could actually fit over the parking lot that's at Sam's and be elevated up to acquire for more parking. I'm just throwing it out there right now for an idea, something to think about. But we may look at trying to find a way to fund that for down the road. But it does fit, it could be a good addition for down the road. I'd also like to, you know, the people at Westport, they gave us some more information. I told them when I was out there the previous month that we're going to be looking to go, maybe not in phase one, but phase two, that we want to get their dredging done. I'm going to work with the people of Seapines because they've got a canal situation similar to that. We'll keep looking at that for them down the road. And for the gentleman still in the audience that brought up the special ordinance for allowing boat trailers to be parked in a driveway. Sir, we've dealt with that several times before. And Jeff, if you would, speak to that because, you know, the Hudson area with all the canal homes, we tried to isolate where they have, would be able to like craft something. But you actually said we can't treat any one neighborhood different from anybody else in the county.
That's a general regulation through the Land Development Code. And so if you wanted to change it, you'd be changing it for the entire, for the entire county, not just a neighborhood.
And you can't pick a specific area to make that happen? So what we would do over here would affect, it would be a full county-wide thing. There's no way to isolate certain areas even if they voted on it?
No.
Okay.
The problem is if you do that, then you'll see what you have in every yard all over the county.
Yeah, so it is.
Definitely don't want to do that. But you can be understanding of what they have in their yard.
Okay. If you want, sir, I'd be happy to talk with you at a later time about this. But I have tried that before, and it just, again, laws are tough to change in certain situations. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowles?
Just want to let you know that your Keep Pasco Beautiful was named the Affiliate of the Year for the Keep Florida Beautiful Association. So that's, congratulate to the work that that team does every day, so. And that's all I have. I keep it short.
Okay. Mr. Sazner?
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I do, I have three items. One, I would like to introduce to my right, Gianna Celeste. She is an incoming senior for next school year. And we met last week at Girl State, my first time actually attending Girl State. And it was a lot of fun. That's where we met. And Gianna approached me and asked if she could shadow. And I thought it would be great for her to experience one of our days here. And she also attended the county's strategic planning session for libraries yesterday and offered some really great insight on how to connect with the younger generation. And I think she enjoyed that, that part of our day yesterday. She is a smart and bright young lady. She's, our future is bright in her hands, I feel. She is in ROTC at school. She is second in command of her battalion. She wants to go to West Point when she graduates. And she wants to be an officer in the Army. But I was, I was finding that there was probably some, you know, you can try other branches too.
Yes, I was just going to say that. My daughter went to the Air Force Academy.
Yes. And her ultimate goal is to end up working in the CIA. So, yes, right? So really great things, but I just wanted to welcome her here. And I'm grateful that she's here and to see us.
You should give her some practice with your ROT experience when you go to the CIA. This afternoon, there'll be a lot more people. Deputies in the back, they might be able to use some extra help this afternoon. They're having, they're going to be standing remotely.
We're hoping.
They'll be a little entertaining this afternoon.
All right.
We're hoping for better things after, so.
The other item I wanted to talk about, I gave these handouts to you. So you probably were wondering where, I don't have as much space at my DAS, right? First is the ACFIR. This is the annual comprehensive financial report. This is for the fiscal year that ended in 2020. It has a ton of great financial information in here. This is what we are audited on annually by the auditing firm CRI. So we have great information in here. We have submitted it to the Government Finance Officers Association to, again, hopefully get their Award of Excellence for more than three decades, you know, in a row. And then in addition to that, we have what we call the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report. It is a beautiful version. It's supposed to be utilized for the, for our community to be able to understand what the county's finances are, what our investments are, what is our debt. It's an excellent book. I want to tell you that it's a great tool if you are talking to our community and you want to talk to them about finances to refer to this. I want to tell you that it's a great tool. If you are talking to our community and you want to talk to them about finances, to, to refer to this, it's, it's a really great item to do that and help understand and bridge that gap with how I complex our finances are and what we do in our county. I just want to say the cover photos, they're a little different on each. They are our unsung heroes of the county and as well as my office. Those that worked during the height of the pandemic to provide those essential services. And this is our, our team members in action. So we wanted to honor them with the cover for what we dealt with during that, that fiscal year. So those are there. And also the PAFER, which we have coined common sense, cha-ching with the S, is available as well as the ACFER on my website, if you would like to see it there. Okay, so the last thing I wanted to mention was during the last board meeting, the board had authorized a meeting with the county attorney, the county administrator, myself, and my legal counsel in regards to the legal requirements for my budget request. I just wanted to personally say thank you for the opportunity to do that. We did meet last week on Thursday, and Mr. Breitenbach was there for Mr. Biles. I felt that it was a really good conversation. We, we exchanged information with the legal requirements. And I'm looking forward to finding out the result of that. In the letter that I had sent last week after the meeting, I did request that if at all possible, if we could know the, what the proposed budget is going to be from the county administrator. It is going to be submitted for the July 6th meeting, and the day before that is a holiday. So if it's possible to get that information, probably by the end of this month would be great, which is just that Wednesday before the meeting. If I could know what that is, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And that's it.
Okay. Well, I'd like to echo some of the thoughts that Commissioner Starkey has said about what we want in our county. We've got a premier county, and we're headed that way. We started talking about more landscaping and more architectural views and on and on about how we want our communities to look, rather than just houses standing there with, with no landscape or anything. So it's been very responsive from a lot of different avenues, from developers, lawyers, engineers. They're all accepting what we really want. And I think we'll end up with a lot better communities than what we've had here now. So.
Well, some are, some are very good.
And some are very good. Don't get me wrong.
Some are a little lacking.
Yep, some are just lacking. But we don't want that type thing. We want to be premier, and we want our community to be a place where we're very favorable for all of our citizens to live in and be proud of where they live and be a part of Pasco County. And with that, I'd like to say, you know, go back in history, and you got to be thankful for all the employees, all the staff members and all here today and all those in the past that got us to this point. Because at this point, we're getting closer to being premier. But without the history we have and the leadership and the different people that added to what we do and ourselves in the last few years being here, never been here before, so we, we've got us to this point. But we're very close to being a premier county. So I want to thank you for all of, all of what you do, all of what the staff does, all the employees. We have many employees that have worked here for the county for thirty, thirty-plus years and, and give their all for this county. And so for everyone that's been a part of making this history, and those that are here today that are gonna make that future even brighter for our premier county, I got to be very thankful for all of you. I appreciate everything everybody does each day. Some of us probably think that, they don't necessarily agree sometimes with what some person's doing, but the fact of it is, that's our history. It takes all that knowledge and all that input for us to make the right decisions based on our staff and based on what we all do to become that premier county. And we're very, very close. And I'm very proud to say that I'm a resident in Pasco County, and also I'm proud to be an American in Pasco County. And I can't be any more thankful than being in a city I was born in and grew up in, Dade City, to be three blocks from where I grew up and understand what's happening around us and, and seeing what has been in our past that has changed because of whether it be weather, crops change, the economy changes up and down, and to a point where we're growing almost faster than we can take care of it. Sally will agree, I'm sure. So, so it's, it's just a lot of work, and we appreciate everything y'all do. But I look for a better tomorrow because of everything y'all do, and I, I commend you on all the work that everybody does. So I appreciate you. And with that, I'm done. Is Sean here?
Yes, he's here.
Okay. Oh, there he is. I didn't see him come in. So I figured I'd get through my comments before we got to him. So I want to hear the good comments that you're gonna give us today. Okay?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ralph Lehrer, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. Before I bring up Sean, our, our team with Sunrise Consulting to speak with you about our legislative update. Commissioner Starkey, to your issue with our federal lobbyist team, Van Skoyek, here, get loud and clear. They will be making a presentation in advance. We have our first meeting with Public Infrastructure Friday to go with their team to go over list of issues. And we're gonna be doing that with a couple of other departments and divisions within our organization. But hearing you loud and clear.
Okay, good.
All right. So at that point, I'm gonna ask Sean Foster to come up. If there's a little time, I'm gonna tag team and, and get some issues he might have missed.
Okay. He's not gonna miss anything. Welcome, Sean.
I'm out of breath. I literally ran from the car. So I, I usually, you know, what an honor to be back here in front of you with the session that it's been. And I've said that for many years, Ralph, actually, I'm much older. Ralph was, I'm not aging him, but he was actually a mentor to me when I started as a legislative aide in nineteen sixty-nine. I'm just kidding, 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 kidding about. And.
So young.
And so many years, we say about session, this, this was the most unique or odd session or weird, without a doubt, this was. And I'll give you the emphasis, my first meeting in Tallahassee. Remember, we couldn't get into the Senate. You couldn't get to meet the Senate staff. You couldn't get to meet the committee staff, anybody. In the House, they had to send their legislative aide down. You had to text them and come down and get you. You had to be on the list and go up. My first meeting with Representative Mariano. Her aide had tested positive five minutes before our meeting for COVID. She was obviously not able to meet me right then. Representative Mariano had to come down and meet me and bring me up. I was the first person for a meeting that she had to meet down in the lobby. And then you weren't allowed to actually stay in them. Didn't matter if you had a meeting. You had to exit immediately. She said, Sean, I'd like to escort you out, but I have a Zoom meeting that starts thirty seconds ago. So, oh my gosh. So we literally had to scurry down the stairs. So you did not get caught by the Senate staff, or I mean, the House staff out of the building. It was very, very odd. So I'll start with the budget.
Well, and Sean, wait a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Before, before session started, you were like, this is gonna be a really bad session. We're gonna, we're gonna be billions of dollars in the hole. And remember that.
It, it was. And I would, I told you, if it had been, and Ralph and I had talked about, I mean, you think about the dollars that came from the American Rescue Act, almost ten percent of the budget. So we're at one hundred and one point five billion. If it had not been for the $10 billion that we got from the federal government, there would be no good here. There would be no good. There would be none of these projects on here, none of these other big grants. It would have been a year that had been decimated. They took $7 billion of the American Rescue Act and implemented it into this year, and they held off another seven, another $3 billion for the next budget. One and a half billion was vetoed because he was unable to do one of the projects, but that's also going towards it. But you're right, Commissioner. It would have been, schools would have been hit the hardest. I mean, there's, there's just no way we could have met, met the needs and everything from the clerk's office and the issues that they've been having for years. So I just wanted to profile a couple of the big ones. Mental health services and substance abuse, that's been a governor's and his wife's priority since they started. To, so have a $1 billion added for those type of services is amazing for the state of Florida. Homeless grants, and I try to put these, these are items that we'll be able to apply for here with Pasco County. The Resilient Florida Trust Fund and program with a bill that was passed, a half a billion dollars. The Septic to Sewer, that is gonna be a grant program that we can apply for directly. That was our Senator Simpson's priority and has been for years. Ralph, I think it started with an idea a few years ago. It was like $50 million. So to see it now up to 626 is, is amazing. And jump in anytime, Ralph, too. Ship, I just wanted to show here, 150 more million dollars. The governor wanted more than this, and I think you'll see some direction for that. The Florida Growth Grant Fund, a job growth, that's 24 million from last year, another 50. I just emailed. I know Ralph and I were talking about getting that up the staff for some economic development projects that are gonna be available. But this was a big one I wanted to share with you and to share with your constituents. I know you guys have had funds available for rental assistance previously through the county. But there's a one and a half billion dollars now available through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. That website is already up. Constituents can go there directly to that and then apply for it. It'll be similar to what they had applied before, Kathy, with some verification on income that, you know, through there, a little bit lighter than what you all had to deal with. But it would be a great assistance for folks here in Pasco County. We know that that need's gonna be greater.
You know what? We haven't, we've only spent 25% of the money that we've already been given in that category.
I'm, I'm hearing that statewide also, so. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, yes. So we are not in need here in our county on the rental assistance. What we are waiting for is the state to release assistance on the mortgage. So we have plenty of people that are waiting right now. And so as soon as the state releases those funds, we will have another avenue for our residents.
Great.
And I'll, and I'll end on this. That was a good question I should add. They think the same thing's gonna happen with this amount of money that's not gonna be able to utilize. And we'd like to, off this here, if we can see that shifted over to the, to the mortgage assistance and where it's gonna be. So three projects that went through to the governor. I guess to start with a big one, Pasco County appropriation items, the handcart water and wastewater, six and, six and a half million dollars. That is gonna be a huge asset, obviously, here for Pasco County. Two and a half, I'm sorry, $200,000 for Ackerman. And Lindrick Sewer and Water Quality, 3.8 million. Commissioner Stark, I know, talking to you, that's gonna be a great assistance to your constituents and, and to yours, Jack, throughout that area.
Commissioner Starkey did a phenomenal job helping get to the process.
Yeah, that was, that was very fortunate that we got all that.
I, I had a senator tell me to stop having Commissioner Starkey text her every year.
Wait, wasn't that a speaker? I think that was a speaker.
It was a speaker a couple of years ago. Well, whether, legal notices, we spoke before, Ralph and I had spoke before, saying, you know, this bill has been in front of you, in front of the legislature, going six, seven years, Ralph. And we've really felt as progress that it had last year, this should have a benefit now. The legal notices is providing the internet. I also understand there could be some tweaking because the original intent was to make it, you know, available to all other internet providers, not just through, I'm sorry, website providers, not just through a, a newspaper. There was some pushback for them, but it will have a savings for the county, and we'll follow through with the provisions and information for you. And I appreciate, because what was happening, and we, we used Pasco County and Hernando County as, your, your county was spoke about in committee. And they talked about the expense that it had to, to the county. And Hernando County's expenses actually went up by doing it because they had one newspaper at one week doing it. And so their cost was actually great and had a huge saving. So thank you for getting back with me on that information that we needed. You know, this is a huge bill. There are many, many provisions here in HB 337 and impact fees. One of the things I will say is it is, what it's not saying the most on here is most clear. It is new and current impact fees. Let me say that is gonna be new and current impact fees if you want to do these things. The implementation of the studies and the provisions, as you can see right off the bat, one of the costs is gonna be a demonstrated need study justifying the increase that has been completed within the past 12 months prior to the adoption of the impact fee. What I would say is Ralph and I are, will have a detailed information for your staff on this. You can see the preemption. This was a bill that passed unfortunately, but that we opposed. And we'll have all the information in the bill for you, for your staff and for your attorney. And this one here, there's a few of these that passed on permits and licenses. Another one, as you can see, passed a wash because the other bill in the House was one that, and that Senate had some provisions that we supported. But I want you just to see, some of these you may be doing, but a lot of the smaller counties are gonna have some issues with the technical items on this. Requires local governments to post on its website each type of building permit application, all required attachments, procedures, reviewing, approving applications, and the status of each application. The next one you can see that I've highlighted too is when you fail to meet those requirements that are in this bill, your per, original fee will be reduced 10% by, per day. Some people feel that, you know, this was necessary. I don't know that some of the groups that are behind it, but there again are some deep provisions in this bill that I did not put in. You could see it's even a full PowerPoint. But Ralph and I will make sure that you get the, the bill analysis and the complete information on this and how it will impact the county. The Resilient Trust Fund is that money that we had talked about in the original with the appropriations. It's gonna create the Resilient Florida Trust Fund within the Department of Environmental Protection as a funding source. As soon as we get that information out from the grant, as provided, we will make sure that we get it to you and your staff, obviously. It's already been signed by the governor. To the end, we are already are looking forward to the next session, but I really wanted to give you this detailed information. In March, the Revenue Estimating Conference reviews their financial estimates for the next 12 months because they want to give them the exact amount of money that they have to go forward. So this update came 30 days after they made the adjustment in March. They had $800 million more than what they projected, projected in March. And the one area that increased was sales tax. So in all of the others, since the pandemic hit, every other provision that was expected to come in for sales tax hit the point, except for sales tax. We were still down on that, even though we were up. Sales tax came up, $800 million more than expected for the sales tax revenue in, in April. And I expect that even to go up with the other bill that was passed with the sales tax revenue that will be collected, the Senate Bill 50, that's gonna bring over a billion dollars. So going into next year, we're looking already good. We have $4 billion extra in the reserves. So next year looks like a really good year. And last, I'll just say Ralph and I are already working on timelines to work with you and the staff on any provisions that, that were implemented, that you would like us to go back and review with the legislators, appropriation items again, obviously, and any policy items.
So jumping off that real quick, in addition on the appropriations to the $10,518,208 that the county received directly, the county as a whole really did well. Zephyr Hills Municipal Airport received $3 million for an extension on their runway. The Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Court received $4,665,000. Florida National Guard Armory will now be placed in Zephyr Hills for $25 million. There will be a CARES One-Stop Senior Center in Dade City for $1,250,000. AM Skills Workforce Training received $450,000. Pasco Hernando State College received $25 million for a student Success in Community Engagement Center in Dade City. The Pasco Association of Challenge Kids Summer Camp, this is a recurring one. They didn't meet last year because of COVID, but they're starting back their camp this year, receives $34,738. Metropolitan Ministries received money to expand their campus here in Pasco County for $5 million. And Bridging Freedom Program in Pasco County received $700,000. What we thought was gonna be an easy year legislatively was not. The legislature continued to pass laws that preempt local government. So I have already given the organization all the bills that passed. It's like 46 pages of bills that impacted the county some way, somehow. So they've been going over those as the governor receives those and signing them. He, he's almost done. He still has a bunch to look at. At this point, he's only vetoed one bill. In addition to the date that Sean mentioned for the first committee week, which is September, there'll be two committee weeks in October, two, three committee weeks in November, none in December. Session starts January 11th and will end March 11th. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Is that typical to have three in November?
Yes, that's our appropriations week. So normally, when it's after the election year, it would be the month of February where we'll have three in 2023. Or 2022, excuse me.
I had a question. Oh, the Sarah Vandenberg appropriation, what category does that fall in?
I'll have to go back and look, but I'll get that to you.
Okay, I just wanted to get that.
I don't know if it was a separate line item. I don't. I don't, I don't know if it came from an, from a pot of money where there are other items similar to it. It might have been just a separate line item that they pulled money from a particular account.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
I can easily find that out. I have it in my desk.
All right. So when do we start, when do we start thinking about next year?
Now.
I'll probably say after you get back from your summer break.
Okay.
All right.
I just wanna say before we leave off to, I want to thank the staff all the way around, the replies that we got back so quickly when we needed it on amendments and we needed it on bills and how would it impact, not just policy-wise, but a cost to our residents and to the Pasco County government. And they were stellar, faster than any other client I had, so I really appreciate that.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sean, great job. Ralph, great job this year. I know we got lucky with a lot of different things, but to get all those things put in place was phenomenal. Two things, I got special projects coming up. One's a Septic to Sewer project up at Seapines, we've done the study on it. If you could work with us to make sure that from what was crafted legislation, that we can kind of make sure we're gonna make the steps. We're getting ready for public comment and a bunch of other things to go up there. And also at Tampa Regional Planning Council, which I'm actually chairing this year, they have got a big resiliency push as well. So if you could kind of maybe, maybe reach out with you, myself and Sean Sullivan, kind of get together and kind of take a look at what we think we can incorporate to move forward, to make sure we're gonna hit the, hit the notes we want to hit to try to make the whole region get stronger as well.
On, on the first note that you said with that grant program that I mentioned about the Septic to Sewer, I think that program would be applicable for that and we'll make sure that you and the staff get the information to, to submit it.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Just in a, in a, and it's great, you know, what we received, we're very thankful. We do need to focus this time, next time around, on some of those flooding issues that are going around in Spelhollow, that are going around in East Pasco, off Island Boulevard and those areas. Those are very important, those affect our citizens on a data-based basis versus pork. So that needs to be a focus. It needs to be a big focus going forward.
Hearing you loud and clear on that.
Yeah. These are things, again, that are a focus affecting the residents daily and they have to worry about it on a daily basis. So that needs to be top priority.
Was that, are we still gonna stick with the one per commissioner thing or?
If we, we'll talk to you when we do the update to prepare going into that, but have some thoughts based on what the feedback we got from our delegation.
Okay.
So, if you will.
So I had mentioned that Pinellas County, and Sean, you weren't here to hear this, I'm gonna say it again. Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners has a meeting with their delegation and I, I think it's in their chambers and with their federal delegation, federal delegation. We've never done that. I, I would be interested to, to hear what other counties do and if we wanna, you know, be a little bit more proactive that way. So.
Yep. And that possibly might, might be they can set some time up during their delegation meeting just to meet with the commissioners. We can utilize.
A public meeting?
Yeah, that's a public meeting and I note, a notice of the paper. Commissioner, to your point, so already working with Mike Carbala, with the funds that were set up in the appropriations this year for Septic to Sewer, the resiliency, note that all those grants are a fifty percent match. So we're looking at our projects that we have, we've got a lot of them here in our county, especially with the Septic to Sewer. So we gotta, we've gotta see how we can, we can utilize that and what dollars we currently have so we can go after those dollars. And, and trust me, I, I, yesterday I just sent a, an email to Mike, our legislative delegation, I got a call from Senator Simpson's office and Representative Maggert's office to say, hey, guess what? They've opened the portal, you can apply. It's like, thank you, we appreciate it, we're right on it. So, so we're working on it as quickly as we can to see if we have projects that we can move forward with, with the funds that came out this year.
I, I have a question on the resiliency money. And Jack, I, I saw in the news somewhere that I was reading, there is a big meeting in the Keys, state meeting on the resiliency stuff, but I couldn't see when it was. It was Tampa Bay Business Journal had, or someone had an article on it. Thinking of ways we can use that money, and I recall when some investors bought a strip mall on nineteen, because some, a lot of nineteen is in a flood zone, in order to redevelop something on nineteen, you have to make it, you know, you really have to put in some protections for flooding if you don't elevate it. So the Aldi grocery store on nineteen, they had to come in and put these special kind of doors that are metal, metal on the bottom and they, they had to make it, make the grocery store flood resistant without elevating it. And so I'm wondering if we can look at going after some of these resiliency monies that could help some of our small businesses along the nineteen corridor. So it's kind of economic development and resiliency at the same time.
Yeah. We can look at, I don't know how much of that applies to, to local governments. I thought it was more mostly to those grants to, I'm sorry, to small businesses, more, it was more so to local governments, but we can look into that for you. Not real sure.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And to tag onto that, yeah, you know, we've got that Sun Coast Recovery Center went through the same thing where they're like, I've never seen the place flood out, but they have to raise up that first three feet they gotta protect. And that goes up and down the coast. And I think it's part of what we're suffering so much in redevelopment along nineteen is for those same reasons. So maybe, you know, I think your suggestion, Commissioner Starkey, is great to have our federal and our state lobbyists together.
Yeah.
To kind of talk these things through, okay, what can we do? How can we help? And maybe it works. And Sean, as far as Hernando County goes, you represent now as well, I know a couple of years ago, they were going to Washington to try to get, because they're a small county, some federal money for county line road. And maybe we can talk about that, how we can work together on that coming up, because I know it's a big road for them and if we can get some outside federal funding or state funding to, to help make that work for next year, that needs to be thinking now.
And just going back to the flooding on, the flood zones on nineteen, especially when they just redid the maps, as we were looking, as AMSKILL's was looking to buy a building, we could not buy anything that was in a flood zone because we wouldn't have been able to use any CDBG money. So it definitely affects the property values along that quarter. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know how you, I don't know how you raise a highway or raise the land all alongside it, but that, there's a attention to how we can make it resilient.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My assistant had given me some of this, some research when I was speaking before about broadband, but under, let's see, under the Federal Communications Commission's FCC E-Rate Program, the government has given seven point two billion dollars for the emergency connectivity, in the emergency connectivity fund. So that, there's seven point two billion dollars to help communities with their connection issues. And David Engle said that there, the lack of high-speed broadband inhibits economic growth and prosperity in multiple ways, limits, it limits locations in the county that are attractive for business and industrial development. This is a major hurdle for redevelopment along the county's older commercial corridors. So it may be along three and one as well. It limits equity in the community since most of the areas without broadband coverage cover census tracts with a high proportion of low and moderate income, limiting empowerment and education. So he said two years ago, he approached the county CIO regarding lack of broadband service in the county and that the county had looked at providing broadband service to areas that are not served by existing commercial carriers, but the legacy cost of infrastructure was a ma, major hurdle. So I do think there are some issues in the county that we've never really talked about. The school district placed Kejit Smart Bus nine hundred Wi-Fi access points at La Cucchi Elementary, Pasco Elementary, Woodland Elementary, Rodney B. Cox Elementary and Cody River Elementary to help serve those areas where, for economic reasons or others, students could not, could not access the internet during the pandemic, so. Did you, did you have something else to say?
No. I'm good. Okay. Anything else? Mr.? You're good? Anything else for discussion before we break for lunch? Good? All right. We'll adjourn till one thirty, be back at public hearing.